When I, I... Well, let me just back up a little bit. I didn't know much about the Hammonds even five weeks ago. Other than a few articles, you know, and I, I mean, I knew what was going on, believe me. But I didn't know much about it. And I went and got in bed one Monday night and my phone chimed. These noisy phones, right? And I looked at it and it was a little article that somebody sent me on the Hammonds. And there began to be this, like, almost overwhelming desire that I had. Like, it was unbelievable to find out what in the world was going on with the Hammonds. I mean, and I couldn't sleep. I, I got up and I studied all over the night, every article I could. I read and read and studied about the Hammonds because I had this urge, this desire. And then after I, after I, I felt like I had a pretty good idea of what was going on, then I began to get this urge that I needed to write something. I'm not much of a writer, but I did the best I could. I was struggling trying to write, right? And I asked the good Lord, I said, "Hey, if you want me to write something, then, I mean, I need some help." And he did. He gave that help to me and I was able to write what I was supposed to write. And during that writing, I found something. I learned several things that were, that are very impactful here. And that is one, the Lord was not pleased with what was happening to the Hammonds. Okay? And I apologize for being emotional. I hope you guys can get past that. The Lord was not happy with what was going on with the Hammonds and I understood that in this writing. Two, I understood that what was happening to them and what was happening to the people of Harney County was a type in a shadow of what was gonna happen to all people across this country if we did not stand. That was the second thing I understood. And, and the, the third, I gotta, I gotta think here a little bit. But the third piece was that, uh, th- this was very clear. The third piece was that if the people allowed these things to continue to the Hammonds, that he would hold them accountable. And, and then he shared with me something else that I've, that has actually, uh, um, came true. And I didn't understand it at the time. But he told me that I was supposed to go to the Hammonds and I was supposed to find out some things. But he also helped me to understand, and I'm not saying I'm getting a voice or anything, don't get me wrong. It was an understanding. But he helped me understand that through this process, the, the Hammonds would eventually not allow you to help them anymore. Okay? And I found that out. Um, I tell you those things because I want you to understand that I know without doubt that this is the issue, this is the time, and you are the people. And it is now that we must stand. And if we do, and we do it right, we do not have to do it with bloodshed. We do not have to do it with, with, uh, anything but honor. But if we do it right, we can restore the Constitution back to this county and it can be an example for all the other counties across this nation. And I'm telling you, I know, I know with, with everything that's inside of me that the time is now, this is the place, and you are the people. And, uh, I think I'll just leave it at that. And, uh, I know there's a lot more work that we have to do. I do wanna, I do actually wanna say one more thing. That part of this process that we did, we did a notice of redress grievance, okay? And many, many of you may have read this. Um, we sent it out across the country. We've been reaching quite a bit, actually, people all across the country, okay? And we asked them if they would sign it, if they, if they would read it, understand it, and sign it. And I wanna tell you, we have over a hundred thousand people that have signed it. We are, we are getting people, every three minutes, somebody is signing it. Every three minutes. That's approximately what is happening. The people of this country will come to you and help protect you if you will make the right stand. They will come, they will be glad to come and, and, and be to your defense. You are not alone here. You are far from alone. I have, I, I had to stop and just print it. I have thirty-four pages of people that have signed this thing. And, and, and it's every three minutes, we're getting a, another signature. And that was, that was six o'clock this morning, okay? My point is, again, the time is now, this is the place, and, and I know you are the people to do this. And it is, the, the thing that we have to do is stand on jurisdiction and enforce the Constitution in this county. Remove the federal government from this county and begin to exercise our freedoms and rights here. And it's very simple. It's not as complicated as many may think. And, uh, I, uh, I guess I oughta maybe end with, with some questions or, or maybe some comments. But, but, uh, that's where I'm at, that's where, where I'm at, is that. Do we have any questions?
Well, the, the, the G O M, B L M, the G O M, whoever runs, anything you can, like, ones go to pay attention. Because I've got a lot of years going on me and I've seen a lot of fire, probably the last fifteen years. And it's really, it used to be everybody went to fire, whatever, and they had to stake and, and you worked, you put it out. And you, you didn't get up at eight o'clock in the morning and quit at four o'clock in the afternoon. You stay, this last summer, they come out at Burns here and would come out to Crane and they wouldn't get out there till eight o'clock before they'd pick up. And they'd all around there and then about ten, eleven o'clock, you'd see them headed out where the fire was. Well, do in, do in, do down, the fire was just... So, and they talked about, well, you had to have the experience, you had to have it educated. That fellow that sent them kids into that fire in Colorado, they made a hero out of him. And it was rough. I mean, if anybody's ever been out, I, I rode every damn day in the mountains, weathering wind. And you, you right here, it's a little bit blowing this way, you just go around a little bit like this, the sun's gonna be blowing the other way. So, he didn't know, well, he had the expertise. Now they make a hero out of him, so I, I, I...
We have a lot of complaints, right? We have a lot of those.
And it's never, and, uh, New York and all that, the EPA and all that stuff, they, they don't have anybody in their, in our government. We'd like to get in there, just got guts enough to stand up to anybody.
It, it's up to the people. It's up to the people of Harney County.
This is what this little old state, little old county right here and the ci- city, whatever. They get these grass, they get all of that. If there's, there's too much, that's all going to cut off there. And that's, that's whatever they've got. They've got us, and I hate to say it, but it's ever gonna, it's too late, guys.
So, no, it's not. Let me, let me, let me give you, uh, some facts of Harney County. And I don't wanna be the expert of Harney County, so you guys could say whatever. But let me just give you a couple of facts. Did you know that in the, in the eighties, Harney County was the most wealthy county in the state of Oregon? That the income was the highest income of, of the entire state, that the family income? And now, this is who it is. It's the lowest, okay? The population has declined. Um, and the primary industrial employment was forestry. The second was ranching. That, those were the two economies. Why do you think when you look at the Harney County logo, it has a cow and it has trees? That's, that's what this county was built to do. And it's very simple. We get back to work. We get back to ranching. And we ask the people of, across the United States to assist us in protecting our own people. And that's what we do. And immediately what you see is a restoration of the economics here in this county. And people will begin to thrive again. No longer do your children have to leave the, the valley to go to the city. Now they can actually make a living here. They actually stay here. They can actually have a future here. And that's what this is about. It's very simple. Restore those things back to Harney County by removing the federal government and going to work. Well, depends on if you're committed enough. And, uh, Ryan, are you ready? Because Ryan here, I want to, uh, I guess, um, he represents and, uh, many, many, uh, thousand people across the United States. And I wanna read something to you in the Second Amendment. I wanna read the whole Second Amendment to you. Can you go there? It's on page twenty-one. You just asked the question, how do we do it? Second Amendment. It says, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state." Can I read it again? "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state." Can I read it again? "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state." That's how. And that's why I'm alive. Because if the militia did not come to our defense, I would not be here today. My family would have been murdered. They told us that they were gonna murder us. And until the militia came and put a check and balance on them, they were gonna murder us. And as soon as the militia came, all of a sudden, now they shaped up and left the area. And this can be done without bloodshed. We don't think, we do not have to believe that just because we pulled the militia in, that all of a sudden we have to have a gunfight. That's not what we're proposing here. We're proposing that the people go about their business according to the Constitution and the militia protects them while they do that. That's what we're proposing here. And with that, I'm gonna turn the time over to Ryan.
"It becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hope these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life and liberty and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed, that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new governments laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and their happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. Accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evinces a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government." I'm sure you all know that's the, uh, the Declaration of Independence. There are three foundational documents which formed the, the principles by which our union exists. They're the Holy Bible, God's Word, the Declaration of Independence, and the Constitution. And the Declaration of Independence, we celebrate every Fourth of July and, and we've all heard it, we know it. It's, uh, it's what gave us the, the country that we have now. So, very briefly, I wanna introduce myself. Um, my name is Ryan Payne. I'm an electrician in Montana. A little bit about my background, very, very briefly. It's, it's not about me, but it gives you an insight as to... Uh, I'm a soldier. And when I was seventeen, I took a note to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America from all enemies foreign and domestic. The government, which we believe is here formed by our Constitution and upholding the will of the people, has sent me all over the world to uphold this oath. What I have found upon returning from that service is that the issue of upholding and defending the Constitution from all enemies foreign and domestic is much more pertinent domestically than it is from foreign invasion. And so, in the interest of upholding that oath, I have, along with many others who have taken this same oath, started to network with one another and have become familiar with one another so that we can most effectively uphold this oath for the people. So, that's, that's basically what I want you to understand. Uh, I, I have dedicated my life to be a servant of the people in defense of them, in defense of their Constitution, and in defense of the principles of freedom and liberty by which we live. So, what I'm gonna do here tonight is I'm gonna present you with the process that the founders used after that declaration, before and after that declaration were signed in order to alter or abolish the government, which was showing itself to be tyrannical to the people, okay? And what I, what I wanna include in that is that as a servant of the people and, and as a soldier and as militia, it is our duty to, as servants, then, to particularly serve the people, which means that the people are the masters. The people, only, only by the people's will can we institute these, these, uh, structures to govern us all. And so, really quickly, read the Ninth and Tenth Amendments so that you understand that the founders took up these notions to us and that the people are the ultimate authority within our founding documents. Amendment number nine, "The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people." Shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people. Amendment number ten, "The powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution nor prohibited by it to the states are reserved to the states respectively or the people." Or the people, okay? So, this is the first time that I've given this, this presentation that I'm about to give you and, uh, it's in the form of a power point, so I'm gonna be reading it as notes. Bear with me. I, I apologize if it seems a little dry. That signed the Declaration of Independence, fifty-six men signed the Declaration. And who were they? It was called the Second Continental Congress, but what was that? The constitutional government wouldn't be formed for another fifteen years after that declaration was, was signed and acted upon. So, where did these guys come from, the founders? They came from amongst the people. They were very well-respected in their communities. They were active participants in the governmental structures that the people had formed in order to see to their security and happiness. And, and they were wise men that were drawn and elected from amongst the people in order to pursue those ends specifically. And there's a manner in which they did this, the people did this themselves, which was aside from the British government, which was being oppressive to the colonies. Because once that government becomes oppressive, there is no correcting it. Sam Adams says that a constitution, excuse me, it was John Adams, the second president of the United States, said, "A constitution of government once changed from freedom can never be returned." Can never be returned. So, how do you go about correcting the corruption of the processes that your government has undertaken? Well, they gave us a, uh, they gave us an example. And you've probably never heard this example before. If you have, then, then you've done quite a bit of research because it takes a lot of digging to arrive at what they did. We know we celebrate the Declaration of Independence every Fourth of July. We know that there was a bunch of founders and they were, they were good men, good honest men. But you're not gonna learn this in school. And unless you do the, the research, you do a lot of due diligence, you're not ever gonna hear this especially from the government. This, this is not knowledge they want you to have. So, it's called Committees of Safety. And they began in, in the colonies, in the sixteen hundreds, uh, starting with Jamestown. We know that was basically the first colonial center. And the people formed these committees as, as they came together uh, in, in mutual interest for each other's safety. And by relying on one another, we ensure our own safety and the safety for our families. And from those Committees of Safety, greater governmental structures can be formed, okay? So, all a Committee of Safety is, is an executive and, and I'll get into some of the particulars there. What were they? They were governments established in the absence of the ability of the existing government to provide for the needs of a civilized society. So, what they were was civil bodies politic. On the voyage from England to America, the pilgrims with the Mayflower Compact created a civil body politic. Jamestown also had a civil, civil body politic. Over the years, they were known by various names. Committee of Protection, Committee of Correspondence, Committees of Safety, Associations for or of a particular area. Their purpose was always to provide for the needs of civil society, a civil government. Committees of Safety existed prior to sixteen eighty-nine and were called by various names. The committee which was created in that year, sixteen eighty-nine, in Boston, New York, is significant that it was created by the members of the militia. The colonists were dissatisfied with the government of the Crown headed by Governor Sir Edmund Andros. Recognizing that the military, the militia, authority must always be subordinate to the civilian authority and having serious concern over the abuse of authority imposed by Andros, the militia of Boston created their own civil authority in the form of the Committee of Safety. Representation on the committee was based upon two delegates being selected by the citizenry to represent each community. And the delegates gathered and exercised their authority by eventually, eventually imprisoning Governor Andros for a period of one year. In seventeen seventy-four, two years before the Declaration of Independence, the various Committees of Safety called for the First Continental Congress. Delegates to that Congress went from town to town, to county, to provincial level committees before being selected to go to Philadelphia. In western Massachusetts, Committees of Safety sent armed militia to force the resignation of judges appointed under the Massachusetts Government Act of seventeen seventy-four. So, Committees of Safety sent the armed militia to force that resignation. Some committees, such as Worcester County, declared independence from British rule unless Massachusetts government was returned under, under the original charter of seventeen seventy-four. Now, the, something to understand here is that there was a British constitution at this time. And that constitution itself was being violated by the British government. And so, people were, were asking for that, their actual constitution to be reinstated. Here's a, here's a quote, real quick for you. Cambridge, April twenty-ninth, seventeen seventy-five. "This may certify that the bearer, Mr. Paul Revere, is messenger to the Committee of Safety..." I need that air. There we go. "...is messenger to the Committee of Safety and that all dispatch and assistance be given him in instances that the business of the colony may be facilitated." Joseph Warren, J.R. person. What's the purpose of the committee? Representation, unity, organize and call up militia, correspondence with other committees, coordination. What if we had a natural or man-made disaster that disabled local government and emergency services? What if our county or city disbands the police department, like other cities are doing in the United States? For example, Clarkston, Michigan, Pontiac, Michigan, Aztec, New Mexico, and many more. Probably aren't even aware of this. "We need to form and actively create a civil body politic regarding communications, food storage, water storage, command structure, so that if the time ever arises where the committee needs to take the reins to protect the community, the plans, means, and manpower will already be prepared to do so." So, what's the goal of, uh, of joining a Committee of Safety or creating one? For your own safety. If you had a flood, hurricane, tornado, or other natural disaster, would you wanna wait for FEMA? If crime were to become rampant in your community, would you want to rely solely on the police? If food shortages occur, would you have the shaven production and storage of food? If power outages occur, would you have a shared source of preservation and water wells? If a foreign country or the U.N. were to invade the United States, would you wait for the military to help? Cultural challenges. "The time to reinstitute neighborhood Committees of Safety and to address issues when existing government ignores them or fails to address them properly is now," as Annan stated. "As a result of the devolving social, political, and economic conditions, renewed interest in the Committee of Safety concept is spreading across the Union. So, this idea is getting out there. Those actively elevating the concept into action are facing a serious challenge. At the most basic level of community, life, the neighborhood, there exists a culturally institutionalized level of interaction among modern American neighbors that is arguably the lowest of any in American history. The challenge is even greater because the Great Depression was so long ago and we haven't seen war on American soil since eighteen sixty-five. They're very insulated from, from the, the, uh, the effects of not lying for our own safety. It is therefore nearly impossible for most Americans to visualize what life would be like if we were under attack in our homes or if store shelves were empty. Most businesses were closed and there was no electricity, unless you just close your eyes and think about it." eyes and think about it. And so, I, I'd like everybody to close their eyes for just a second, and imagine what it would be like if you don't create structures for your own safety. What would it be like if you lost all those things? What would it be like if, if a, a natural disaster occurred, and we didn't have structures in place, which would take care of the necessities for us? If we didn't come together and support one another, and decide that it is important for my survival that I seek to help you with yours? Or what if a foreign government invaded our homeland? Military is on the military basis. The military right now, to be quite honest with you, is spread out all over the world, pursuing tyrannical endeavors. With your tax dollars, we were, for quite some time, the only country in the entire world that was invading other countries. The purveyors of liberty and freedom. The only country in the entire world invading other countries. Okay?
Do you interrupt this?
Yes, sir.
As time went on, there was the militia, there was, so we've evolved. We've evolved into a federal armory in each local town, is that proposed to take care of things like that? National Guard would be, that was meant to be, and it just...
Is that what militia was meant to do?
Is that how it evolved?
How the militia evolved?
Right.
The militia, the word militia comes from the Greek word militai. So it's a very old concept. The, the notion of the Spartans is probably the, the one that will hit home the, the easiest. The word militai means the civilian, the citizen, in his capacity to protect his community. So, the militia is you, and me, and, and all of us, and, and it's us, with our abilities and in our capacity to protect ourselves.
My, my point is, is we've been lulled into complacency.
Right.
And how did we get there? I guess is my question.
How did we arrive at there, at that, at that point? We have, there, there's desires that people have in, in our communities, and we want to... As we move on through life, we want to raise our families, and we want to do our jobs, and we want to live a happy life. That's why the pursuit of happiness is enshrined in that Declaration of Independence, uh, as the foundation. And in pursuit of those things, we lose sight sometimes in, in trying to satisfy ourselves of the importance of coming together in order to pursue our happiness. And so when we get wrapped up in, in our own individual pursuits, uh, we begin to ignore each other. And so that was one of the, one of the cultural challenges that was addressed there, is that, as a people right now, we are more disconnected than we have ever been. We are relying on interactions through social media and electronic means, especially the younger generation, my generation. And we're not communicating with our neighbor anymore. We're not talking to each other. We're not addressing each other directly. So, that's essentially the issue.
My concern really is this issue. Sit down here at the last wire, and all of a sudden you're worried about the Hammonds. You've been worried about the Hammonds.
The Hammonds is, uh, they're a skill into a great occupation. The issue that is affecting the Hammonds is actually affecting every single person in this room, but unless you come together and we start addressing these issues, unless you're talking about them with each other, unless you're discussing the means of how to remedy these, these situations, then you're barely aware of it, and you're, and you're pursuing your everyday life. And the time is now to see the Hammonds, and, and glimpse at their situation, and then ask yourselves, if you conduct yourself in, in the interest of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, if you conduct all of your affairs and affairs in those, along the lines of those three things, like the Hammonds have, then how far down the road is it before what is happening to the Hammonds is happening to every single one of us? Ultimately, what we do know is that the path that, that our country appears to be on, every single time throughout history, when the people do not stand up for themselves, do not utilize their God-given right to self-protection and self-governance, it ends in tyranny and genocide, genocide. This isn't fear mongering. This is how it ends up. Every single time. It's not, it's not a question. Did I answer your question, sir? So the militia is the people, and this is, that'll answer the rest of your question, I think. The militia is the people, and so that's why the Second Amendment says, it says, "A well-regulated militia is necessary to the security of a free state." And so the right of the people to bear arms shall not be infringed, because the militia is the people. And United States Code, Article Ten, also outlines who the militia is, although it's been, it's been remanufactured in certain ways, but it says that the unorganized militia is the people from sixteen forty-five. They call that the militia of the United States. So the, the United States government can call up anybody in the entire country, across the Union, from the ages of sixteen to forty-five, to serve in defense of the Union. Each, each state also has its own requirements for militia service. Yes, sir.
I want to interrupt you. You're doing a great job. We are, what are we at, almost two hours into this meeting? I'd like to make some call, call to action, if you think that you're, you give your message.
It's, uh, I have, I have quite a bit more, but I think, uh, if you feel that the necessary information is provided, then still...